Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's town hall meeting on livestock. This came up at council a few meetings ago and we had a discussion on it. After that meeting, I know the mayor was approached, as well as myself, from different residents about the possibility or having more of an in-depth conversation with the general public regarding livestock. We are aware that there's covenants to the city of Ocean Shores and what that would take to potentially change that. This is not really a question and answer, don't have a lot of answers tonight, but really just wanted to hear if there is enough interest from the citizens that this become an issue for a ballot. Again, council wasn't one of the things that we passed forward to look at in depth, however, because the mayor and some council members have been approached, we thought it would be a good topic to have a town hall meeting. And Allison Klein, who is also on city council, AKA Vanna White for tonight, will be walking around with the microphone to just really get your feedback, what you guys think. I know that there is a survey that was put together by city staff tonight, like an impromptu just written comments and whether or not, I know it says chicken and pigs, it's mainly livestock. And I know that the breeding world has changed significantly and there's miniature pigs and all kinds of different critters now that all fall under livestock. So, again, just want to get the feedback from the public tonight and whether or not this is something council should look at to have on the ballot. So with that, we're going to turn it over to you and I know Nicole is recording, so we'll get all of your questions and if you do want specific feedback back, let us know and then we can respond at a later date. Thank you.
Yeah, if you'll write any questions on the comments section on the survey, because we're not going to be answering questions tonight, and when you do speak, when I give you the mic, if you'll please stand up. So, raise those hands.
Hello, thank you for allowing me time to speak. I just wanted to give my two cents, throw that in there. I know there's those that'll disagree and that's okay too, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in. I don't feel that it's a good fit for our particular city. And also, I think that it opens a whole Pandora's Box of potential problems. The comments that I'm going to be made, going to be make are mostly, I'm just talking about chickens, but it carries over to other types of livestock and that kind of things, but you know, I don't want to discuss every individual critter kind of thing. But if the powers pass it, even though I don't think it's a good idea, there would need to be very specific, detailed instructions and also penalties if they're not followed. Because, again, I think there's a whole Pandora's Box that could be opened. Some of my comments about just things of consideration type of thing is that, first of all, no roosters, no roosters, okay? Yours truly is not an 8:00 AM person and I do not want a 5:00 o'clock rooster who were arms distance between me and my next door neighbor, okay? Please, no, no, no roosters, okay? Also, there would be, need to be a regulation about numbers. That would definitely need to be considered because there's chickens and there's chickens. Another issue that would need to be discussed, again, I'm not for this, but these are things that if it was passed type of thing, would be containment. Like I was just saying, I'm an arms distance from my next door neighbors. And a lot of people who raise chicken, like free range chickens or whatever you call it, so I don't want my neighbor's chicken visiting my house or somebody else's house or something like that. Or is there, is there going to be a chicken coop? In other words, what type of thing would need to be considered here? The next thing is, I don't, there would have to be talked about, I don't want a business next door, meaning that they're selling eggs and selling this and that. I live in like just a, not like where we're real far away from each other type of, you know, I don't want a business next door to me. Also, along besides eggs, are we going to allow the chickens to be slaughtered? Are we going to have, you know, fresh dressed chickens offered? That's something that, you know, would have to be discussed. Another item is that I don't feel that any of the chickens or whatever livestock kind of things should be allowed if it was passed to be donated, for several reasons. Number one, as we know, there is foodborne illnesses and this type of things related to chickens, eggs, other things kind of thing. And right now, for example, the brown eggs and all that recall of all this other kinds of stuff, if you've got all these individual people having their, you know, out of the goodness of their heart, they want to donate, there's no way of tracking things. And also, for example, I just came from the Tuesday night dinner. What happens if a whole bunch of eggs are donated to them and they happen to be contaminated? Again, the person wasn't meaning to, but they're contaminated, you've got a whole group of people. And then you've got the senior center Thursday, am I talking too loud? You're talking too loud. Okay.
So, we've got a whole lot of people that want to talk.
Okay, can I just say a couple more comments and then I'll...
No, I quit.
Okay, real fast, it's homeless people that is a problem. Chickens in the store, that could be a problem. And, yeah, no tracking, and the coyotes, they can bring coyotes.
Okay.
I grew up on a farm and the first thing you're going to get with chickens is the explosion in rats and mice. Then you've got to poison those. And you'd think with a pest control at the main gate here, we would know better than to put farm animals on small pieces of property. I grew up on a five acre piece of property where you could have those type of animals. I've had bears break in the chicken coop for the rotten eggs. And, you know, coyotes try to break in to get the chickens. Rats will eat chickens. And you're going to poison those and the crows, the ravens, the hawks, the owls are going to eat those critters and then they're going to get poisoned. We don't have big enough pieces of property in a residential area like this to have farm animals. I suggest if people want farm animals, to go out in the valley here and buy a five acre piece of property and have a farm. Thank you.
Pigs and chickens stink. Now, I'm from the Midwest and I used to spend time on my family's farms and I'm telling you right now, pigs and chickens stink. I don't care how far away from you they are unless they're in a grocery store and they're wrapped up in foil or something. They smell, do you want that next door to you? And the poop, oh my goodness. And like this gentleman said, it brings lots of rats. Our coyotes will be bigger than a Great Dane in this city if we have it.
I guess I'm going to be the first person for chickens, so I'm going to give it a shot. Hi. I think we can be environmentally responsible for our chickens. I think we can be environmentally responsible for the opportunity to take care of them. We already have coyotes. We already have bears. Shall we get rid of our garbage? Because right now, that's what happens when the bear comes in my neighborhood. I find that saying that we can't have chickens, we can permit the chicken coops and permit the area in which they can be in. We have code enforcement already and I guess we could ask them to enforce the chicken coops. But I find that living with the thought that the chickens stink, or the pigs stink, or the farm animals stink is a truth, as well as the canal sneak stinks when the summer gets hot. And we haven't had that this year, but it does happen. I would just like, I was one of the people that went to the mayor and to Lisa to talk about having chickens. So, for me, I would like to see us have chickens. I think we can permit how many number of chickens we have. Obviously, we don't want roosters. I don't want to wake up at 5:00 AM or 4:00 AM. I've raised chickens, I've had chickens, and yes, they stink, but they stink because we don't take care of them. And that's my comments.
Hi, I'm Pam Moser. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of things. One is the Ocean Shores Comprehensive Plan. Among other things, it says, strives to nurture a harmonious environment that will enhance the quality of life for all citizens and it provides for efficient municipal services. It also says that we will cultivate a community that is attractive now and in the future. I would argue that adding chickens and pigs does not enhance the quality of life for all citizens, nor does it add to the attractiveness of the community. In fact, I'd be willing to bet that the quality of life for some members of the community would be diminished because of poor animal husbandry by some and the smell, sounds and visual unattractiveness that goes with that. Adding backyard chickens would do the opposite of providing for efficient municipal services. It would be lovely to believe that all chicken or pig owners would be awesome, but if we're honest with ourselves, we know that will not be true. City staff would now have the added responsibility of being sure that animal enclosures are up to standard and there would definitely need to be some pretty specific standards for the safety and well-being of the chickens and pigs, visual appeal and proximity to neighbors. Because of the high amount of nitrogen, phosphorus and potassium in chicken and pig poop, as well as salmonella and other bacteria in our shallow water table, the city would need to check that animal waste is handled in a timely and safe manner for the environment. Chickens produce five and a half to seven pounds of poop per month, wet weight, and the wet stuff is what ends up smelling like ammonia. And it is estimated that a medium-sized pig of 110 pounds will produce over four pounds of waste per day. Animal control would possibly need to confiscate any of these farm animals, or whatever you're calling it, livestock, in poor conditions. And bird flu would need to be monitored, especially since we are in a migratory bird flyway. Pigs are not service animals, as some people want to argue, and Washington State dogs and miniature horses are the only service animals. These are comfort animals, they don't have any rights under the ADA, so don't fall for that. The shoreline management, excuse me, it's the Shoreline Master Program specifically says in 5.02.01, it prohibits the following uses within the city's shoreline jurisdiction, agriculture and forest practices. And in the definition of agriculture given in that document, animal and poultry husbandry is specifically listed. So, we would have to change the shoreline master program with the state because people want chickens. It calls for control of pollution and prevention of damage to the natural environment. Chickens and pigs aren't going to do that. It needs to protect the shoreline natural resources, the land and its vegetation and wildlife and the water. Chicken and pig manure aren't going to do that. Promote public access to enjoy the physical and aesthetic qualities of natural shorelines and it should be preserved to the greatest extent feasible and consistent with the interests of state and people. Chickens and pigs, sorry, this is an opinion, I guess, are certainly not going to enhance the aesthetic quality of our, of the shoreline area and anywhere else in Ocean Shores. We need to spend time and, and resources on making this a great place for people to visit. People don't come to the beach because they want to see your pigs and chickens.
Ocean Shores is a coastal residential community and that's it. The properties here are too small to accommodate farms, for lack of a better word. Only an elite few can afford to buy five or six, you know, adjoining lots to create their own microenvironment and the rest of us don't want to live next door to that sort of thing.
I'll be pretty brief because I've spoken on this before at a council meeting. This is, these are some quotes from a chicken owner. Chickens produce excrement and it is the most disgusting foul smelling stuff on this planet and there will be lots of it. These savages do this all day, every day, and often in their own food and water dishes. They make a lot of noise, even without a rooster crowing every morning. Our chickens are very naughty. There have been numerous occasions where I've gotten home from work to find the chickens roaming around our backyard after escaping the confines of their coop. And has also been mentioned, some of you know that I've talked about code enforcement being needed regarding our current situations in different parts of the city and code enforcement has not responded to these circumstances. And code enforcement would have to be involved with this issue. And again, the water table, it's very, very shallow, about seven feet, I think. Think about what's going to be going down into our groundwater. And right now, we get our water here in Ocean Shores from different wells in the city. And bears and coyotes, yes, they are here, but they run free, they are not contained in your backyard. And they will jump the fences to get at the chickens and pigs. Thank you.
I'm going to be Switzerland on this. I'm for property owners doing what they want within rules. As we have recently shown with the RV camping update, rules can be changed. Seattle, Olympia and Bellevue allow this within their rules. They do not allow roosters. They have strict limits on quantity of birds based on lot square footage. They have rules on coops and fence construction. Other cities have figured it out, why can't we? I draw as much of a parallel as I can with my day job. I'm responsible for a $700 million a year budget at work. Any change we make there needs data, data, data. We also do pilots before a change is made. There we call this a two-way door decision. Why can't we have a trial period to collect this data?
Hey there. My concern is property value. We take pride in our homes. We love our little town. And you think if you want to sell your house next to the pig and the chicken people, ain't happening. You're going to sit on that real estate forever. Do I have to stand up? Okay, thank you. I don't stand up very easily. I first saw this in my closing papers in 1982. And I kind of chuckled at that time, I knew that this had been a cattle farm. And those covenants were specifically written at that time for this to be a residential community. To change it, we can vote all we want and that will not change the covenants. If you want chickens in today's environment, you hire the lawyer, you go through and get the necessary number of signatures and agreement in your division, because the covenants are applied by division, and you take responsibility for making it happen. I totally object, I even object tonight. I've been to a few dozen of these meetings over the years and discovered that lots of people, including sometimes our council, don't really get what it means and how to change it. It can't be changed by a vote of the people on an Ocean Shores city paid for ballot. And it should not be coming, the ballot should not be coming from our council. If a ballot is requested, you have the ability to create, those of you who are for it, get the necessary signatures and get it put on the ballot that way and you're responsible for the money. Then the people who bought, read their closing papers and understood what they were buying into, should not have to pay for someone who wants to change the basic tenants. Now, I'm not even really opposed to chickens, but I knew when I bought my property that I would not have farm animals around me. And I agreed to that. And I expect everyone who comes in to adhere to the covenants that were placed on the properties for lots of valid reasons. And I expect our council to at least explain, I did hear the word covenant tonight, but I'm not sure that everyone recognizes what that means and how you go about changing it, but it is spelled out. Actually, it's right now, it's on 98569, the Facebook page, tells you what you have to do if you want to do it. And your odds of success are pretty slim, although it has been done once here in Ocean Shores. Not for animals, but for another item that's in the covenants. It has, I believe it was Division 17 and it's been probably 15 years ago. There were very, also, the vote is not by the individual, the vote is by the amount of land that you own. And so, the biggest landowner in any division can dictate what happens. And that's just the way it is. I believe, I know people who have chickens in this town and none of their neighbors mind and they're very clean and et cetera, et cetera. And there aren't any complaints. And that's because they're doing it absolutely under the radar. And I'm not going to turn them in. I don't even care. But what I do care is that we do not let a small group of people spend all of our money. And I don't want, I don't want to see my money spent on a vote, on something that won't even accomplish the objective of the people proposing the vote. So, I would ask our council members in particular, go back and look at the results of the last umpteenth of these meetings. I appreciate the town halls and I appreciate looking for input. However, how many times is it going to happen? Of course, how long am I going to live? But I've been here all the time and I've sat through way too many of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do know that the many, several people in Ocean Shores have chickens. And I think I understand that some of the council may know this also. For some reason, in the past, codes have not been enforced regarding the chickens. Doesn't make it right just because they are not enforced. Yes, we had a big meeting here, I can't remember, it was a year ago or so, and they brought their kids in and they brought their, somebody had a chicken they brought in and they told us how good it was for the kids to raise the chickens and how much more it would, they could save because they would get their eggs from the chickens, not realizing how much it would cost to build the coop and keep it clean. The cost to maintain the chickens is very much, it's not a little bit. Yes, the chickens will attract raccoons, they'll attract the flies, the mess. We're on one of the water canals and please, don't tell me that some of this poop isn't going to go drain down into the canal. I know for a fact that it will. And yes, many animals are looking for these birds to eat and I'm sure they'll find a few. We were also told that there was something like 36 or 42 cities in the state of Washington, I didn't reconfirm that number, that allow chickens, so we should allow them here also because they're already allowed in the state of Washington. I think that's a bunch of chicken feed also. And the other thing is, we don't do much with our code enforcement at this time. I know the mayor is attempting to correct some problems in the city that has been going on for many years and it is taking time. But who's going to tell the person next door that they have way too many chickens and they need to clean it up? And as the one person mentioned, how much poop is produced each day and where in the city of Ocean Shores are you going to take that poop? Or are you just going to dig a hole and let it go into the ground and sink into the water? We were also told that they were service animals and that's why they were allowed. And service, they can, service animals can be almost any kind, but in order to have a service animal, there must be some sort of a letter written from a psychiatrist or a mental doctor saying that you really need, it's called, it's not a service animal, it's called ESA, emotional support animal. And that in order to have an emotional support animal, which could be any kind, according to the Washington state, which I looked up, you don't need a permit or anything for them, you just need the letter with you to show that you mentally need this emotional support animal. So that was an excuse for some of the people. I hope that many of you will realize that Ocean Shores is not a farm place. It is a place for seniors and young people and kids and going up and down the street and we're a very friendly community here. I've met so many nice people. Let us go forward as a beach town, as a city next to the ocean. I just soon hear the ocean roar than the chicken and the pigs. Thank you.
Nicole, do we have anybody online that wants to speak? If you are on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. While we're waiting on our Zoom attendees, anybody else?
There's no hand to raise.
Okay, Don, go ahead. I know that voice.
Well, I'm just saying, there's no hand on my screen to raise, so I had to speak out. But I disagree with all the people that are speaking. I've been here a number of years, this seems to be coming up every so often. I'd like to know what criteria it takes to convince the council to have a meeting like this because I can think of a whole bunch of topics that I'd like to have a town hall on. Basically, I'm opposed to it. I've been in places where there are farm animals in the neighborhood and it's not the, it's not a good scene, as spoken before, so I just want to say I'm opposed to it. That's all, thank you. And I still don't see a hand on my screen for speakers to raise their hand on. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don. Randy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The biggest issue we have is code enforcement. Currently, we can't even control the number of dogs, people being licensed for dogs, et cetera. This burden on code enforcement, to use an example, go look at Aberdeen's code and it has, the coop has to be 25 feet on each side from the property line and 10 yards from the back of the property line. So, there are a lot of restrictions that many lots in Ocean Shores would never meet because of the size of the lots. We can't even have fires pits legally in our own backyards in most places that are supposed to be.
You still there, Randy? Randy? We do have one comment that somebody typed into the chat room. It says, why not require permits? The city profits from that. Strict regulations on amount of chickens, coop size, no selling, no slaughtering, annual testing for diseases. Americans have thrived in the past by self-supporting. Even eggs, chickens from the store are recalled often for diseases. Regulating and permitting amount and even coop size would also help with the smell. Anybody else online? Anybody else in the audience?
As Jan mentioned, there are 42 cities in our state that allow chickens. But I do, I'm sure you all understand how, what a unique city Ocean Shores really is. We're a peninsula and we're surrounded by water, but in addition, we have, what is it, 22, 3 miles of freshwaterways? Guess where that's, oh, and the water table being so shallow, guess where that's going to go? We, our freshwaterways committee already restarted up again, they're working... They're working on things. They're going to be studying the shoreline management plan for the state of Washington. And we're surrounded by water. We already have such shallow water. And I do know many people put things into the canals and lake that they shouldn't and it's polluting and we just don't need to keep going in that direction for our own health and safety. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, everybody's had really good information up here. I am a hard no for any kind of livestock. Our water table's big. People can't pick up after their dogs. We think they're going to pick up after chickens? It's not happening. What it's going to create is neighbor problems, court fees, because I will report you, and it will go to court. Thank you.
I agree, I'm a hard no as well. I do have a question. This was brought up in January. Here it is eight months later. How often are they going to bring it up and why are they continually bringing it up? How many times a year do we have to do this?
I can answer that. We did, like I mentioned earlier, we did bring this up at council. It was a hard no for council. The mayor and some council people were approached by enough people that they thought it would be a good just to have a town hall because at individual times, not everybody comes to city council meetings, so it was just a fair opportunity to have a conversation. That's all. We're just here, we're here to listen. It's recorded. The mayor, the rest of council will listen and just see what the comments come back for.
Mine is a very, maybe a, mine is a very, I think, realistic question. I appreciate the town hall. I think it's great. However, when people make a complaint, whether it's five or a dozen, they need to think about the cost involved even in having a town hall in a building that's sitting in the city. We're still paying to have the air conditioning on, lights on, facilities available. All of that costs. It costs the city. It costs the taxpayer. I just want everybody who complains about something in the city to realize the cost that's incurred because of their complaint. I think we all need to be aware of that sometimes. Anyone else?
Hi, I just wanted to mention, one thing that comes to my mind a lot is how much people complain, or certain people complain about the wildlife that we have here already, the amount of bears that people have concern about or the coyotes. And people think raccoons are cute, but you know what? Raccoons kill chickens really easy and they really like them and they can put their hands in the coop. We've experienced that because we had chickens before. And so it's a much, much bigger problem than just people having chickens because we already have the wildlife that's here that we have an obligation to protect, I feel, that this is supposed to be, you know, a wildlife area. And I don't know that bringing other farm animals in here is conducive to keeping them healthy and free of disease and increasing other problems that people are already concerned about.
Anybody else? Is there, that was Nicole checking with Randy to see if he was finished. Anybody else online have anything?
Going once, going twice? All right. Thank you guys for your time and coming out tonight. We really do appreciate the feedback, no matter what it is, it's always nice to hear and hopefully we can put this one to bed. Thank you.
Thank you.